Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. In compliance with Chapter 231, Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in a notice of May 1st, 2024. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in the Star Ledger on May 3rd, 2024, and posted on the district website. Can everybody please stand for the flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's here the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Bosamo.
Here.
Mr. Pataglia.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin. Dr. DeLeah.
Here.
Mr. Fraginels.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Mrs. Quark.
Here.
Mr. Scotty.
Here.
And Mr. Farro.
Here. Okay, Mr. Bagna, presentation of our 24-25 budget.
Before we go down to the auditorium to set up for the presentation, I would like to introduce two people joining us up on stage. The first, Mr. Serenelli, I'm sorry, Ray, joins us from Nissavacia, our third-party accountants that help verify the creation of the budget to verify adequacy in budget submission. The second person came to me through a notification yesterday from the Assistant Commissioner that we were approved for state advance alone, and we were being appointed a state monitor. The state monitor was appointed as of yesterday, May 6th, and joins us in district today. We spent a day together and working together. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Jeanette Makis, our DOE State Fiscal Monitor. Welcome. Can you see that okay in the back, Mr. Torto? Can you see that? Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know this has been a challenging couple of months, and we'd like to provide information and then answer questions pertaining to the budget. The timeline has been short, and we've worked hard to come up with this presentation. I do want to state, and you can go to the first slide, Ian, that as of yesterday, we have kind of a, not things have changed, but we do have a state monitor in district who will be reviewing everything tonight. So unfortunately, while this process has been ongoing and deadlines are approaching, she came into district today, and everything will be pending her review and submission. State monitors have final fiscal authority in districts, so that has to be a consideration of our budget submission, and I just wanted to point that out. I wanted to first start with a topic we've been talking about, this year's deficit. This year's deficit was something that came to our attention. We created a corrective action plan. We went to the state for help. Through the mismanagement of the budget, we have accumulated significant deficit to the cash flow of this year. In order to find a remedy for that, we built a corrective action plan with the state, and we applied. And just yesterday, we learned that we were being approved to remedy this year's deficit. So right now, we are verifying numbers in district. Actually, that's one of the tasks Mrs. Makis had this morning, is meeting with our auditors, meeting with our business office, and verifying the funds needed to get through this year and pay all of our bills. So I wanted to say first that this year's deficit has a remedy. The remedy is an advance or a loan from the state. They advance state aid. You can consider it a loan. The repayment does not affect next year's budget, as my understanding is, and I say that because Ms. Makis will have input here, that it starts being paid back in the next fiscal year, so we have the budget for the repayment in the next fiscal year. There's no interest on this loan, and it's carried for 10 years. So the final number is being calculated. You don't see $7 million up there because it's being verified with a person in district looking through everything and beginning to look at the analysis of what we've done in district. The state accepted our corrective action plan, and that will be updated with Ms. Makis' assistance as we work together in the business office. We have appointed on the board agenda tonight an acting business administrator, Ms. Bella Polanco, who will assume authority to sign checks and do different things in the business office. With the support of Ms. Makis, we will work to remedy all bills being paid and all debts settled. We will also start a search for a new full-time business administrator later this week. That will be a very intense process overseen by our state monitor, where she'll be a part of it and make recommendations as we move forward to find the best person for Nutley to move forward with. I want to say it again. This problem happened this year. We have a remedy this year, and all debts and payments will be paid upon receipt of the money. Next slide, please. So this year's budget, what are we doing differently? Typically, I'd be up here with a business administrator, but I have led this process since this has been going through in March, in conjunction with a third-party consultant. So Ray, as you saw up on stage, has been working with us to verify our position control roster for staff we have in district to make sure the budget is adequate, has been working to verify our other accounts to make sure we meet the preliminary budget. So when the budget moves forward, it has third-party eyes on it, as well as our state monitor who will look over the documents later this week. Between that process, we will verify that our budget is accurate in moving forward for next year. We've also built the budget on reliable revenues. That led to some of the mismanagement issues. We verified every revenue coming in with several people, Mr. Ray, as well as our Commissioner of Finance, as well as our auditors, Lawrence Vinci, as well as New Jersey DOE Field Office and John Farrar. So this budget is built on revenues we know are coming in, and that's very important to do. It's also been a needs-based budget. So to the extent possible, I've met with people in charge of departments and buildings and worked through what we need to operate for next year. Also with staffing, we built a needs-based staffing approach for the district. Next slide, please. We've had several guiding principles I've been sharing with the board, and they've been sharing with me. Our goal is to preserve the existing educational extracurricular programs and experiences for all of our students. We were able to eliminate, identify and eliminate inefficiencies across the district to deliver a sustainable budget. Were able to restructure administrative roles and responsibilities, maximizing our student-teacher interactions. We were very conscious of class size, remain within class-size limits. Meeting the needs of special education students and the enrollment guidelines were very important. We've had several board meetings over the past two weeks even, where we've had public comment at each one, and that was all incorporated into the development of this budget. We've also attended other meetings like CPAC and PTO meetings to listen to the needs of the community. We did want to enhance our Tier One structure. That's an educational jargon term for gen ed support structures and classrooms to help students in the gen ed setting the best we can before considering special ed resources. We want to build that. We want to comply with all state budgetary guidelines and tax levy requirements was important. We also wanted to think about building a framework to expand maybe two or three years down the road. We understand that there are challenges in this budget, but we do know that we will, through planning, fix our fiscal issues and build a sustainable path forward for the students of Nutley. We also want to make sure we look at our buildings and grounds. We want to maintain our facilities and think about years down the road where we can find improvements in our facilities. Next slide, please. This year's challenge in budget creation, and this presentation will be available online right after this. This year's challenge is stated up there, and it is kind of separate but related to the deficit we're in now. Rising costs in key areas are stressing the programs we've built, and it's unsustainable to build a budget on revenues that aren't coming in. So if you take this year's operating budget, which is about $82 million, and you move it one year forward, that budget becomes $87 million based on health care increases, raises, everything that goes up year to year. The issue is, we have $74 million coming in in reliable, we've come to call reliable revenues. That is the current tax levy and the current state aid. So if you try to run this year's program next year, it's not going to work. So the difference is $13 million, and that has to be overcome. So the preliminary budget setup, luckily, we got $3 million more in state aid. The tax levy in the preliminary budget was 5.26, that's $3.3 million, which leaves you the rest to cut from programs, which is challenging because every program we have is successful, and every group wants to maintain their program. So we had to go through this and find efficiencies, and we did this by finding efficiencies, by looking at where we're spending, top to bottom. We did this from my office to every office in district. And we did this with the students in mind to try to keep the programs in place, focusing on class size, and of course, our special education needs. Next slide, please. So if you look at our operating costs, our total general fund operating costs for last year, they were $82 million, a little bit over that. Our reliable revenues with the tax levy put us at $81 million. We are going to see a decrease in our operating budget with more state aid and increased tax levy. But again, the number looks more like $87.4 million because of the increases we would normally see by moving up a year. So our operating budget is actually going down about one and a half percentage points. Our revenues, our state and federal revenues went up. I said $3 million. We actually received more ex aid last year, so that brought our revenue up a little bit last year. So there's about, you know, $2,800,000 in increase between the two years. Our general fund, our local revenues, our general fund local revenues was a point of misbudgeting. We budgeted much more there than we received, so this had to be right-sized. That's going down. The deficit is in this year, not in next year. We're not running a deficit next year. And then our general fund tax levy. Of note, the 24-25 school district budget summary reflects lower net operating costs of $1.2 million and balances the budget for the upcoming year. The impact, the tax levy is offset by increases in state aid. The budget is compliant with all state. Budgetary guidelines incorporate statutory waivers for health care enrollment increases and bank cap. Operating cost breakdowns will not be finalized. Tonight, we were working off the preliminary budget, although modifications and the appropriations have been made, especially in staffing. When we looked into the systems, a lot of our systems were inaccurate. We built them from the bottom up, so will look different than the preliminary budget submitted. And with Jeanette in district today, everything will be pending the review of our state monitor, so those appropriations will most likely change based on that. All staffing and operation cost decisions surrounding this budget are subject to change and review by our state monitor. Want to make that clear. Moving forward, the commentary on this budget. Subject to state monitor approval, I, along with the board, identified the following using the funds of the preliminary budget. We trimmed excess capacity within the district and unnecessary expenditures, enabling a more efficient utilization of our staff and resources. Administrative roles have been reconfigured, collapsed with expanding teaching assignments added. A more efficient daily operations has been suggested and projected. I do want to talk, I know people want specifics. We condensed 35 positions in district, top to bottom, from my office across the district. Out of those 35 positions, we were able, through strategic positioning, moving people into retirements, preschool expansion, the people that are certified, expanding special ed roles like the ERI classes, reduced that number of people downsizing to 15. There were four administrative roles in that 35, I'm sorry, five administrative roles in that 35. Out of the 15, it's spread evenly amongst all the different types of staff members we have, based on, again, we have about 630 staff members total in district. That will be the impact on staffing. All resources necessary for security and preschool remain unchanged. We will maintain our security footprint throughout the entire district, having the same amount of personnel in each building as we've seen this year. That will remain unchanged. They bring a necessary piece to our educational community. All resources to support services to our special education students remain unchanged. And might I add, for the first time in probably a couple of years, the special ed staffing, the special ed tuitions, the transportation will be fully funded as per the need of that Therapist services and paraprofessionals will be there as well, district therapist We have looked at all areas, including supply lines, and are looking for efficiencies in our athletics. We will maintain all of our sport programs and our levels, reducing coaches where the number doesn't add up to the amount of coaches, as well as look at all of our supply lines and support, like game workers and different things like that. We will look at our instructional technology and go through our in-facing versus out-facing student support. Our Chromebook program will be in place. We will move from a purchase-to-a-lease model, which is more cost-effective for us. Through finding efficiencies, we will work to build the same experience for students. At our high school, we are increasing running the same schedule, all 22 AP classes, all 32 dual-enrollment classes with Rutgers, Caldwell University, Seton Hall University. We will continue those programs. Class size will go up. The average class size in all the departments will be no greater, the average class size will be no greater than 25, as projected by our school counseling department at the high school, with the exception of B fiz ed, which will be in the low to mid 30s. At our middle school, our class size will go from 20 and 1/2 to 24 and 1/2, which is still below 25. In our elementary schools, we will right-size based on need for all of our elementary schools. Class size of the elementary school is more of a factor of total amount of students, how much available space is available at our elementary schools to determine class size. Next slide, please. Next steps. The Board of Education will vote on this budget. The state monitor, after the vote, will review and get to know the budget. And I can't emphasize this enough. We have a situation that's very unique to Nutley where we were planning a budget, and just yesterday, the parameters of our review process and approval process have changed. So we will go through that process and bring Ms. Makis up to speed. She will review everything and then have authority after that to look at it. We will review the tax levy, a thorough and adequate education. We will review the cash flow. We will review the corrective action plan and make adjustments to build next year's budget, the 25-26 budget, immediately. We have to make strategic changes in the way we look at some of our services to build sustainability in this district, and we need to do it now so this never happens again. Then it will be submitted to the New Jersey DOE for review and approval, and the board will act to request for proposal, all service providers looking for efficiencies and monetary savings, as well as update the corrective action plan with future ways to run our school district. That puts money, more money, where it needs to be for programs for our students and not in other places. That's the end of my presentation. I want to thank you for your time. I know you have a lot of questions. We're going to go back up to the stage and open public comment. Is that okay, Mr. President?
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow comments on reports, resolutions, and all school-related matters. Our Board Regulation Number 0167 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all those wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be addressed, directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Comments concerning district employees and our students will not be responded to. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. For questions where the board may not have immediate answers, the board will take information and respond to you at an appropriate time. Does anyone have any comments? Actually, before you, somebody comes up, I make a motion to suspend the 20-minute rule for these communications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're still going to, we're still going to stay within the three minutes, only because if there's others that wish to speak, but you're more than welcome to come back up after everyone is done. So, does anyone have any comments? Man Canova? There we go. 147 Beach Street. Ms. Makis, welcome. Happy to have you onboard. Ooh. Be very beneficial. And good evening to everyone. One, one part of that presentation, Superintendent Bagna, you mentioned enhancement of Tier One intervention for general ed. Now, would that mean a student who could possibly be evaluated for an IEP, that the bar would be higher for what, if you could explain that?
Sure. Tier One, it's educational jargon, and I apologize for that, but it's part of a multi-tiered system of support in general education. So if a student in a classroom is falling behind, either academically, social, emotional, behaviorally, for all different reasons, they should go through different tiers of support before being looked at for special education. The first tier is in the classroom. The teacher should use strategies, differentiation strategies, and support. This comes with a lot of professional development for our teaching staff, time to do that. The second tier is a pull-out support, where students come and they're pulled out to get maybe a different type of curriculum or different type of program to return them to grade level. And then as you go up the tiers, we collect data, we look at progress, we make informed decisions about moving forward to a referral to special services, and we use data to drive those decisions.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all. Does anyone else have any comments? Does anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Joe Guarino, one eleven Brookdale Ave. At the April twenty-seventh meeting, I believe, board members stated that this is not a criminal matter. My question to the board, what law enforcement agency investigated that you arose to that answer?
So, Mr. Guarino, the state monitor is here. One of the thing, one of the objectives is, once the state provides funding, that's a requirement, that forensic audit be done. So, upon completion of the forensic audit, any criminal action will be referred to the appropriate agency.
Okay, also, on the cap plan, I noticed the cap plan was emailed to the Attorney General. Is it right now under the New Jersey Office of Public Integrity and Accountability? Is that being reviewed by them?
Which, what was that? Which, which document?
The New Jersey Office of Public Integrity and Accountability from the Attorney General. Your cap plan was, was emailed to them.
I don't know who emailed that, so...
It's right on, it's right on your report, right on the bottom, AG.
Which report are you talking about?
I'm talking about your corrective action plan.
The corrective action plan, yes. That was sent to the Department of Education, yes.
Well, my question is, is it being investigated by the New Jersey Office of Integrity and Public Accountability?
Not that, not that I'm aware of. It's not our department, so I wouldn't be able to speak for them.
No, what I'm saying is, it was submitted.
Sir, to my knowledge, we submitted this to the DOE. They used this to verify, and they agreed with some of the findings in there to approve our loan and assign a state monitor. I'm not aware if they turned it over to the AG's office. I don't know what happened after that, but in conversations with higher-ups from the DOE, I can tell you they have received it, they've reviewed it, they've approved it, and they agree with the findings that there was mismanagement of money that led to our situation.
Okay. Is the state monitor aware of this?
Yes, she is. And we will be reviewing the plan, and she will be helping us update the plan as she stays in district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
Good evening, Maria Hammond, Rhode Island, New Jersey. I just have a few questions. You did answer most of the ones that I had. I understand that some teachers receive notices that they were laid off based on performance. Are those teachers being replaced by other teachers, or is that part of the thirty-five that you mentioned earlier that's going to be restructured?
That depends on their role. Some are being replaced based on their role, or could collapse, some were being collapsed. That process is a process we undergo every year, this time of year, as required by statute, that all non-tenured have evaluations completed by the end of April, and are reviewed by our evaluators that come every year in many districts to make decisions based on performance.
Okay, thank you. My next question, what strategic changes in services are projected for the next year? I know you mentioned that we're okay for this year, and that there were some strategic changes that you're looking at in the future. I mean, what kind of cuts is that going to potentially entail?
I can tell you that at the high school, we will continue with the rotating drop schedule and the classes being offered. At the middle school, we are looking to have five teams instead of six for our students. And at the elementary school, we are looking to incorporate more time for tier-one interventions and modifying the lunch, so less students put stress on our facilities. Those are some strategic changes we're looking at.
Okay, my last question is, you mentioned a thirteen million dollar shortfall. Moving forward, how are we going to handle that? Because this year, again, you're saying we're okay?
So this year, the remedy to this year is through the state loan for this year, which will begin repayment not in next budgetary year, but the following. The issue of thirteen million dollars comes from taking this year's operating budget and extrapolating it to next year. That was our starting point, to see what it would cost us, and then looking at our revenue coming in, what we actually had. That came to thirteen million dollars. That's a challenge we faced in Nutley that has been extremely highlighted by the mismanagement of funds, but we have, we're facing challenges, as all school districts are, of rising costs in certain areas that are impacting other areas, and with a budget that is primarily based on salaries, benefits, special education costs, health care, it's challenging to find that place to reduce those things.
Okay. I do have one more question. I did ask about corrective action plan the first time that I came up and spoke. You said once we knew more about exactly what we were looking at, we would know more about a corrective action plan moving forward to prevent something like this from happening in the future. That's my question. So what, what kind of things are in place to prevent this from happening, such as, is there going to be a monthly review now? Are we going to have, I know you mentioned having Geltreud, I guess, an associate there on the team, and they're, is that the third party you were referring to? Third-party eyes, set of eyes looking at what's being done and how it's being done moving forward?
Yes, that's what we're looking at, is having a third-party assist our business office with closing out the month-end, making reports, presenting those reports to the administration, to the board. Also, we're looking at having an external auditor prepare quarterly reports, so that we have those on a monthly basis, but we also have it on a quarterly basis.
Okay, and those will be available to the public?
If they're, if they're, if, yes, if we can make them available, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
My name is LeAnn Martin. I've been the math coordinator for fourteen years. Before that, a Nutley High School teacher. I have been in district for twenty-five years. On behalf of the admin team... On behalf of the admin team, I would first like to express gratitude for teachers, for their hard work each and every day. Thank you, and happy teacher appreciation week. I speak tonight on behalf of the Nutley administrative team, and I would like to clarify who that represents. Our team consists of building principals, vice principals, district coordinators of preschool and content areas, K to twelve, a supervisor and directors of special services, school counseling, and athletics. Forty-one percent of our admin team was born and raised in Nutley and graduated from Nutley High School. Sixty-four percent of our team started as a teacher, counselor, or CST member prior to earning their admin positions. Twenty-three percent of the team are actually Nutley taxpayers. Like all of you, we represent Nutley and are very upset about this crisis, and none of us are at all connected to the cause. Our admin team, along with teachers, child study team, counselors, paraprofessionals, secretaries, school resource officers, coaches, technicians, custodians, transportation, and all other support staff, are those who that, who run the district day-to-day. We are interacting with the students. We are present in the schools. So we come here tonight to educate the school community about what our administrators do for kids each and every day, and what could be compromised should positions be restructured or cut, as indicated in the corrective action plan. We have heard quite a bit about oversight as we continue navigating the current financial situation. Coordinators provide ongoing K to twelve oversight of curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Reducing this oversight will have a direct impact on academics in Nutley. Our programs will greatly suffer without this entire group. Together, we have spearheaded an explicit multisensory phonics curriculum for early learners, more diverse classroom libraries, Math in Focus, Math Fluency Activities, Mystery Science, Teachers Curriculum Institute for Social Studies, interdisciplinary lessons, instructional coaching, Math Bridges Interventions, the Scripps National Spelling Bee, the Algebra Readiness Assessment, IXL, Schoology, Codable...
Really?
Computer Science Programming, Honors and Advanced Placement Opportunities, the Rutgers Program for Allied Health and Sciences, Dual Enrollment Opportunities, Seal of Bili literacy, High-Impact Tutoring, Strategies Programs, Ruler and Other Social Emotional Learning Initiatives, Rutgers University Behavioral Health, Preschool Programming, Award-Winning Musical Concerts and Productions, the Nutley Art Show... Community Events, and so much more. In addition, we apply for and manage grants, lead our departments, and complete heavy teacher observation loads to foster their professional growth and ensure quality instruction. While the building administrators are tied up dealing with everything under the sun, who will communicate regularly with teachers? Who will respond to staff needs pertaining to academics and programming? Who will answer teacher emails when they need support? Who will conduct program reviews for content areas? Who will plan and provide professional development? Academics should not suffer. The principals and vice principals simply cannot do everything and attend to every single need of students and staff. They also cannot be expected to hold expertise in every content area. Without content expertise, we are concerned that the student performance, particularly in tested areas, will suffer. This will show in our test results and school performance reports, which may impact Nutley's educational reputation and eventually, the home values of this community. We could not possibly list all of the responsibilities of our building administrators. Principals and vice principals often put their need, their need, the needs of staff, students, and parents in front of their own. Because we have content coordinators in the district, principals and vice principals are available to greet students, assist them when they are upset, celebrate their joys, resolve conflicts, be present for parents, and ensure safety protocols are followed. All of which create and maintain an environment conducive to learning. As former teachers, we have always felt, and still feel, that our teachers are the heart and soul of this district. Coordinators need to continue to lead teachers and staff with curriculum development and support, instructional strategies, teaching resources, assessment creation, professional training, student growth objectives, just to name a few. They have their fingers on the pulse of best practices within their content areas and create structures to ensure that these are implemented in our classrooms. If there is a change in schedules, teachers need support from administrators on how to attend to such changes and help our students transition as well. If teachers and staff feel inspired, appreciated, and supported by leadership, students will be happy and thrive. Dismantling our admin team, which is already below the average of local comparably-sized districts, will set us up to fail. Fail our students, fail our staff, and fail our community. Student learning will suffer. Principals and teachers will not have the support they need. Teachers will have more on their plates, not less. Nutley is an impressively accomplished district. We would like to keep it that way. Our school district is arguably our town's largest industry and most important investment. The academic quality of our schools is the marker of success in our community. The accomplishments of the district are largely due to the hard work and dedication of our entire staff. We know as board members, you commit a lot of your time to the district. We appreciate your efforts and commitment. That being said, the board and central office are not the only people who have committed many years, some of our entire careers, to Nutley education. We do not envy the tough decisions you have to make, but we sincerely hope that you do everything in your power to mitigate the impact to our academic programs, which are led by your administrative team. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
Hello, my name is Joe Curcio, four nine-nine Center Street. First question I had is the bidding process. The Media Center was an accepted bid of, I believe, two hundred thousand. By the time it was done, it ballooned up to one point four million. Same thing with the Oval. It started at a three hundred thousand accepted bid. By the time it was done, it was near two million, just short of two million. How does that happen?
So, we could actually get you all of that information. We have our architect that has it all, can put it out, so we'll take that, and we will get you the answers for that exactly, because that was bid out.
Right.
If there was a change order, the architect has a change order, was approved by, recommended by the architect, it was approved by the board, so that's information we would easily be able to provide you.
But why such a large gap?
I'm not, I don't know if that, yeah, I understand.
You're going from three hundred grand to two million, that's not...
I understand, but I don't, I don't know if that's accurate, so that's why we're going to have to...
It was in the report.
I understand, but we have, you know, we, if we, if we went out to bid for it...
Right.
Right? There was a process for that, so we had to award a contract, so we will get that information back to you. We will take that and make sure we answer that.
Okay, and as far as the insurance, who is our current broker?
Our current broker is IMAC.
So we've been using them since two thousand and eight, correct?
I believe so, yes.
There's nobody else that could get us more cost-effective insurance?
Well, so, that's one of the, one of the action items, is that we're going to RFP all of our professionals.
Okay.
Okay, that will include our broker, that will include all of our professionals that we use. With that, then, we will, see, the broker, there's two components to it, right? So the broker is the one who goes out and actually, you know...
Shops.
Shops out the insurance.
Right.
Our current insurance provider, our network, is Horizon Blue Cross for Shield.
Okay.
Okay, then, you know, they shop out the dental, they shop out the prescription, so the, the broker part of it is a small piece of it.
He's just presenting different...
He just, he's out there shopping, they're out there shopping those services to us, and then obviously, we, we make a decision on who is the best for the, obviously, for what we have. And, you know, we also have to meet, we also have to meet, you know, contract requirements too, so, you know, that dictates a lot of that.
Okay, the next question was, oh my God, I'm drawing a blank right now. The expansion. Mr. Battaglia had mentioned that the expansion of the town was also an issue for, or causing the deficit. Has the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Ed come together and say, you know, maybe we need to slow down and let the BOE get caught up? Because, as you guys were talking about cuts, the town is still expanding, so you're adding more fuel onto the fire, essentially.
So, I'm sorry, apologies, can I...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure, and if I made the statement that the expansion of the town is putting burden onto the district, that's actually not accurate. So our current enrollment has not increased over the course of the last ten years, with the exclusion of the pre-K expansion program.
Okay.
The pre-K expansion program is funded by the state.
Okay.
So the expansion of certain costs are what are putting pressure on the district, but it is not the population in the town.
All right, thank you.
Yep, so I just, just to, just to continue on that, if you look at one of the charts that's in our audit reports...
Right.
It actually gives you a ten-year history of our enrollment, and it's pretty consistent over the last ten years. You know, it does, it does go up and down...
Right, right.
You know, about a hundred or so students.
But it's nothing.
But it's not, it's, you know, you don't see an increase of, you know, three, four hundred over a two-year period, with the exception, obviously, with the preschool program that was just put in place a year and a half ago.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments?
At last week, I'm sorry, Richard Sibello, Harrison Street, Nutley. At last week's meeting, I asked what was the exact budget deficit. You told me seven million dollars. Tonight, you showed it at thirteen million dollars. What happened?
Sir, two different numbers. The seven million dollars is this year's deficit, and that's, that's not been confirmed yet. The state's still working to identify accounts payable, checks that haven't gone out, things of that nature, to identify this year's cash flow deficit. Mrs. Makis was in today looking through all the files, and she's going to report to the state directly. The thirteen million is a number that comes from next year's budget, taking operations this year, putting them on next year, what we would have to pay for the same program versus the reliable revenue coming in from our different sources for next year. So it's two different, two different situations. One is this year's deficit, which is a big problem that we're getting remedied through a loan. The other one is the rising costs of operating school districts and how they're impacting versus the revenues coming into the school district.
Okay, I also last, asked last week, if the budgets for the last three years... Okay, I also last, asked last week, if the budgets for the last three years were balanced and if they had a surplus. And they said they couldn't answer me because they didn't have the facts in front of them. Was it?
I can answer that question. As we've established, the budget over the last two cycles was not balanced.
It wasn't balanced.
It was submitted to the county that showed revenues and expenditures being balanced, but there were expenditures that exceeded the revenues, and there were unfortunately unrealized revenues. So the budgets, in reality, when we looked at the data, they were not balanced. When they were presented to us at the board level and to our superintendent, they were balanced. So the reality is, to, last year's budget was about $6 million in deficit. This year's budget is approximately $7 million in deficit, and if we rolled this program over to next year, which was the slide that Mr. Bania showed, we will be approximately $10 million in deficit, which is unfortunately the reason why we need to make some reductions in our expenditures. That helps in that.
But according to the internet, we had a surplus last year and the year before. Now, how could one read a surplus and the other one read a $6 million deficit?
I can't tell you what the internet says. The internet says I'm a billionaire, and I'm not.
You know, it's under the New Jersey budget, so.
But as we restated last, in our restated budget for last year, we, we had, we ran a deficit last year of about $680,000. As we were able to, with more investigation, identified that that deficit was much larger. Much of that is tied to bad data, unfortunately.
Now, we borrowed money from the state. No interest, fine. Is there any other departments in the city that could have lent us money, that had a surplus, and could have lent us money through the town instead of borrowing it from the state?
So, so we're separate entities, right?
I understand that.
You have the municipal, you have the school, separate entities. So, you know, we're required, when we, when we were aware of the deficit, we were required to notify the State Department of Education. That's what we did. So we are working within those, those rules, and, and so that's, that's where we're at at this point.
So all the departments are private entities, and they all worry about their own budget. But we, the taxpayers, wait, pay to the town. We don't pay to each entity. Now, let's say we take the new department that's building seven pickleball courts in Owens Field. Do we need seven pickleball courts? I'd rather have it go to my kids' education or the transportation or something like that. I don't think I need a pickleball court. Anybody here play pickleball? Oh, for you. That's where our money's going.
So, I'm sorry, but it's, it's, again, it's two separate boards, right? Two separate entities. And I understand that on your, at your level, you're looking at it, it's still the township, but there are, it's two separate entities. So the Board of Education is separate from the Board of Commissioners, and some of those projects that they do on their end, you know, they may not be using tax money for, they may be getting funding through the state, through grants, through federal grants, so it's two separate entities.
Okay. Now, you did mention something about a tax levy, increase in tax levy. Does that mean property taxes are gonna go up?
Tax levy, a tax levy increase, yes, that's what that.
And you have a cap at 2%?
We have a cap at 2% with certain exceptions, exemptions that you're allowed to, to use. Bank cap, there's insurance waivers, there's, there's student enrollment, so there are certain cap, exceptions to that.
Okay, I also ask you the question, if the town was insured for the loss. Now, does this considered a loss that the insurance company would cover? Or is it, you know, just a misaccounting or misbudgeting? Or like I said before, was it criminal?
So I think we've answered that before.
All you said was it wasn't criminal.
But we've answered that, and, and as we said, there's gonna be a forensic audit that's gonna be performed.
And who's doing the forensic audit?
That, that's something that the state is going to assist us with, so the state's gonna be involved in that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Cosentino, 23 South Spring Garden. I'm looking at the advertised recapit, whatever this is, balances, all right? We're looking at the capital reserve. You have $21,258 being carried across a span of three, two years. The audited balance from 2023, the estimated balance at the end of this year, and then the estimated balance at the end of next year. What's even more startling is that the maintenance reserve is $40. As taxpayers and homeowners in this town, how many people in here maintain a balance of, a budget of $40 to take care of your house? And we have seven schools in this district, of which all of their kids and my kid attends. I wanna make sure that you're properly budgeting the correct amount of money to maintain the safety where my kid attends.
If I could answer, and, and you're not the first to bring up this point, there are, and there are people up here who are more qualified to answer this than I am, but there are certain state statutes. Many of those reserve accounts are designed to be funded at the beginning of the year and fully depleted at the end. They're supposed to be used, much like a HSA account in healthcare. You fund it, you lose, use it, or you lose it.
I know how government accounting works.
So that's, that's why there's no money in any of those accounts at the end of the year.
Oh, but at the audited balance, as of 2022, you had $1.7 million approximately in that account. And then, in the maintenance reserve, you had $1,717,000. Now, if what you say is accurate, what you were doing was improper in 2022. And you approved it.
As we've established, I can't speak to the numbers specifically, but as we've established, much of the data that we're working off of, in those years, were incorrect. There's also some carryovers from the COVID years that were allowed to carry fund balances in certain reserve accounts that had to be removed coming into the following year. I don't want, I can't speak to it specifically, but I think you deserve an answer clearly.
What is the process for actually approving the budget as the board members? I understand that you outsource a lot of your accounting and finance and all of that, but how much budget, actual budget and planning experience does anyone on the board have? And how closely did you pay attention to last year's budget and the prior year's budget? Never mind this year's budget and next year's budget. I actually have career experience in budgeting and planning, and this, this is garbage. That's what this is.
So you asked a question regarding the budgeting. Okay, so we are the Board of Education. We have professionals who are the ones that handle the budget and put that together. Mr. Bania can, can speak more about that, but we are, we are presented with the budget, and that's what we are, that's what we look at, and that's what we approve, is what's presented to us.
So what you're saying is that nobody closely looks at the line items as they're presented? You just get a number sent, put in front of you, and you just rubber stamp approve
That, that's not what I said, Mr., I'm sorry. But, okay, again, so we're not in the day-to-day of, of, of operations of the school district. Okay, so when budgets are put together, they're put together by the various departments. Okay, with the business office. We are not at that level to say that that number that they're putting in there is correct or not correct. We're not in the day-to-day. We're not supposed to be in the day-to-day.
Okay, if the budget office, if there's something wrong in the budget office, and you're not in charge of those people, you're really relying on, on some black box to tell you something that may or may not be true.
Well, which is, which is the main reason why we are going to be implementing some of those other corrective actions, which is bringing in someone from the outside to look at that, to provide reports directly to the board. That's not happening, that hasn't happened, you know, before. That's something that, it's in a corrective action plan that we're gonna be implementing.
All right, one last question. What structural place, processes have you put in place or will be putting in place to ensure that this never, ever occurs in this school district in my lifetime?
Well, part of that, part of that is putting in those, those, those outside consultants that are gonna be reviewing that and providing input to us.
The outside consultants has not worked, and we know that it hasn't worked because the auditors completely missed the deficit of last year, missed the deficit of this year. That's not working.
Yes, Ms. Makis?
Hi, Jeanette Makis. Just as a background for everyone in the audience, I was a board member for 18 years. I was a business administrator for 25, and I worked for the state as the county executive business official for nine years. So that's my background. What happened here is very unfortunate in, in the sense that the numbers that the board was given were incorrect. And you're absolutely right with regard to the reserves that were used. And the fact, and I'll speak specifically to the 1.4 that was in the maintenance reserve. That money can be, can be withdrawn during the course of a year. So, for example, I don't know, the first four rows of the auditorium seats, something disastrous happens and we have to replace them. They're not budgeted for. The board can vote to withdraw that money during the course of the year. Well, what happened last year, and I only know, I've been here two days, and I looked at the last year's audit, because I wanted to see what was happening before I came in here. And what I can surmise is that the business administrator withdrew the money from maintenance reserve and then transferred it out and utilized it for other areas. As a result, the budget was over expended, but it didn't show, the board members would not have known because the monies had been taken out of the reserve. So the superintendent and the board rely on the business administrator when it comes to the budget. I mean, let's be real, if you work with budgets and audits, you know that. So the money was there, which is how last year came out even. The problem was when they used the same numbers, because it looked okay for the current year. Well, now, the reserves are gone, there's no place to pull the money from, and what has resulted is what exists today. The difference now is that, and I hate to, I'm not sounding bragging or anything, the difference is I'm here. And there will be very tight controls. One of my responsibilities is to come in and look at all of the processes that are taking place. How purchase orders are done? How are they handled? What happens if a teacher ordered six books and now they know they need nine? Did they call up the vendor and say it's okay? Well, no, it's not gonna happen next year. So I can only tell you that there will be more reviews when the budget is worked on next year. It'll be with real numbers, and once you establish again that budget that we can live with and which is going to keep us sane, if you will, once we get there, which will be next year, '24, '25, each year then, a step becomes easier because you've got a baseline that everybody is comfortable with. And I hope that answers your question.
I do actually have a follow-up to that. So.
I was afraid of that.
I actually have an accounting background, so I understand your part about internal controls. My question to the board, though, is you rely on outside auditors. These outside auditors attest the financial condition of the Nutley School District. As she indicated, there was a lack of internal controls. Now, the auditors are supposed to have spotted that there was a lack of internal controls, that there were failures within the financial reporting of the budget and the actual results.
No, I didn't, I didn't quite say it that way.
Well, I know you're not saying that, but that's what the, that's what the job occup, that's what the, what CPAs, and that's what auditors do for a living. They attest to the, the, they verify and they test, attest to the actual financial records of whomever they are auditing. In this regard, to what extent is the state looking at the actual auditors and seeing if they did what they were supposed to do in the operations of what you?
I, I can tell you that they do that. They, the state does monitor auditors. They have rules and regulations that they have to, that they have to follow. They have to submit certain materials. I know we have an auditor here, and I'm, I'm responding for him, but basically, the problem, the problem in this case was you had a year that technically you were over expended, but there were sufficient reserve funds to cover it. The problem is that we now made a budget, we're into the school year, the audit doesn't come to the board, it came in March for the '23, '24 school year. By the time the budget came in and people looked at it and said, "We have a problem", well, the school year was already three years. The, the timing of when audits are done versus when the budget has to be prepared versus when the school year starts, that's, I can tell you, that's been a problem.
Why, why is it nine months? A public company, they close their fiscal year at the end of the calendar year, and the report is out two months later, three months later. Why does it take nine months?
That, I can only tell you that all of those dates are in the statutes. I, you know, we have, as business administrators, tried to get that changed.
The state statute says they have nine months to report?
Now I'll turn it over to the, to the auditor.
So the previous due date for June 30th, school district audits, was December 5th. Legislation was passed in January to extend it to January 15th. So the, the new due date for the next three years is January 15th.
And during the course of your, and I'm not putting you on trial here, but during the course of your review of the books and records, you're normally looking at work papers.
So just to, just to be clear, Mr. Serenelli is not, it's not, it's not an auditing firm.
Okay.
I'm not the current auditor.
Okay, but they're supposed to be looking at work papers, and there's supposed to be a manager reviewing the auditor's work. And there's, and if they notice anything, they're supposed to immediately bring that up, especially if it's something so concerning as this. And there was an absolute failure in that regard as well. I mean, there is failures all across the board here. I'm sorry, I know you guys are elected, I know you're volunteers, but I gotta tell you, this is just horrendous, horrendous. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Megan Martin, 12 Woodland Avenue. When you say all resources necessary to support services to our special education system, does that include the ERI classes run by the South Bergen Jointure Committee?
Can I answer? Yeah, so in talking to South Bergen Jointure, they have, the, the plan was to transition those classes to us. We're gonna put a transition plan where their paraprofessionals will stay with our teachers as we transition. They'll also provide PD from their Maywood campus to our teachers to integrate them into those classes.
So you have cut that complete program out of your system?
No, it's, it's not cut, we're just, we're using.
It's not just being run by those teachers, so that's the paraprofessionals, just the support services.
The paraprofessionals from South Bergen Jointure.
So where are you getting the certified teachers that have the necessary experience to deal with emotionally disturbed children?
From our district.
Okay, but you told me at our last meeting, at the CPAC meeting, that the problem was that the program was unsuccessful because we couldn't find a teacher to run that mod, right? So how are you planning on finding those teachers if a school district, if a school that is run with people who are experienced with emotional regulation problems, they couldn't find a teacher? How are you planning on finding one in the district?
I was just explaining that they've had several teachers in and out of those.
No, they haven't. My son is in the program, so, sorry. We had one leave in November, and then for some reason, last week, I got an email that for the last 30 days.
I see Mr. Jones in the back, he can verify that we. He can verify that we had a teacher come in a week ago.
Right, yes. For the last 30 days, you have a teacher in the program, but we haven't had one since November. So we haven't had teachers come in and out. We haven't had a teacher since November. So how are you planning to staff this program?
Yeah, well, that's a South Bergen, but we're, we're going to staff it with our teachers. We've actually.
So you're going to do it better?
We hope.
I want your promise to me that you're going to do it better.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that we have worked with some of our teachers to identify those teachers that are strong in this area. We have brought them to the class to see if they think it's a good fit for them. We're working with our teachers not to just put someone there, but to find the right.
That was my second question. You're not going to just put, force someone into that position? That's going to be a voluntary position?
No, we're, we're working. We've, we've talked to some teachers about going into that role and we've brought.
When are we going to find out who those teachers are? Because I'm not going to agree to put my child in that program until I know exactly how it's run because I agreed to that program because it was run by South Bergen. I did not agree to put my problem, my child in that program run by Nutley.
As soon as we can.
I'm also very disappointed about the fact that there's been no information to parents about this change. No one has contacted anyone and said, "Hey, by the way, everything is about to change starting in June." For summer school, who's running that program? You or, or South Bergen?
That, that ESY is being run by our department.
Okay. So again, there's been no communication to any parents regarding those changes. That's completely unacceptable. I'm sorry. These are our children's futures.
We'll look at.
And you guys have just acted like, "Oops, sorry, you made a mistake. We're going to try our best to do it better." This is not kindergarten. We're not going to try our best to do better for our children. You need to put a plan in place that shows that you are going to be able to support these children and their needs and keep everyone that they have in their lives and their support services in place. So you're telling to me in your slide that you're not making any changes, but apparently you are. You've already cut something. So you've already cut from the Special Education Department, just to be clear. You're saying you've made no changes. You made a giant change in my child's life. Are you guaranteeing to us that when you put this proposal through, that there are going to be no more teachers that are going to be fired, that there are going to be no support services that are going to be fired, transportation people are not going to be fired, and paraprofessionals are not going to be fired?
I'm telling you, that's the plan we're presenting.
That's the plan. Are you guaranteeing to me that none of those changes are going to happen?
I don't have final control over that. That's our monitor who will review everything.
Okay, so we're, we are expecting more firings and more cuts.
I am, I am not expecting that, no. But it has to be reviewed by.
But you can't guarantee that there's no changes are going to be made.
So we as a board, we as a board cannot guarantee that. Okay?
Right.
All, all decisions will.
So we are going to, again, live in fear until May 15th and you guys decide if we're going to be fired or not?
Hopefully not, hopefully not, but.
When are you going to let the paraprofessionals know if they're going to have a job next year?
Okay, so our, our state monitor is here now two days.
Okay, state monitor. When are you going to let us know when the paraprofessionals are going to have a job next year?
This is not, this, please, please direct your questions to me.
I, I, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from. As a parent, as a child in the, in the system, and as a paraprofessional in the ABA program, every single teacher and paraprofessional and support service are living in fear. The vibes in our school are terrible. Teacher Appreciation Week? No one has done anything for us. No one has assured us that we're going to have a job next year. No one has talked to us. No one has showed up. Where are you people? Why is no one showing up and telling us that we're going to have a job or not? Everyone is scared. No one is teaching.
And we understand that.
No one is learning.
And we understand that.
It's just been a complete waste of a month. So get your stuff together and let us know what the plan is.
Thank you.
We need answers.
Thank you, and we appreciate that.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.[803.48][803.48](APPLAUSE). Okay, does anyone else have any comments?
Nick Frey, 66 North Spring Garden Ave., and thank you for turning the clock off. At the first question after the March 13th, 15th email came out, I asked a question, I think, based on the crowd, I know the answer, but I just kind of want to hear from you. How much faith do you think the community has in this board? And have you done enough in the past two months to remedy any of that faith? Uh huh, let them, let them answer, let them answer.
Well, I think that's a very difficult question because I think depending on, on, on our perspective versus obviously the, the community's perspective. But this Board of Education did recognize that there was an issue. Okay, we, we, we look to address that issue. We contacted the proper authorities, you know, notified the state. That's what I meant, not authorities, the Department of Education. And, and, and this administration with this board has been working and we've been trying to be transparent to the community. We've had more meetings in the last month and a half than we've had probably, you know, in, in the last year. We've gone out to, to all of the different PTOs. We're trying to go out to all of the PTOs. The CPAC meeting, the Special Parents Education Group. We've had multiple meetings where we've had the, we've explained, you know, presentation. We've given out questions and answers. We're, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We understand there's, there's a lack of, you know, people don't feel comfortable and people are anxious and, and, and they're worried. But we're, we're doing everything we can on our end to, to make sure that we build a sustainable budget. We have our, our state monitor here with us. Okay, she's going to help us in that process. And as, as Mr. Bania said, she will have complete control on decision-making when it comes to anything that has to do with the budget or personnel, anything that's within that purview. So we're, we're, we're doing everything that we can. We're entertaining, obviously, you know, any, any type of feedback. We, we want to hear from the public. That's why we've had, we've had many meetings. That's why we're here tonight, presenting the, you know, something for next year. And again, and we, just to be clear, the budget that was presented tonight still has to be reviewed by our state monitor.
Is that going to be cleared by the 15th? So now the timeframe is for review of this budget and I'll address it to you, Mr. Frey. Everything is on track for still May 15th?
I'm sorry.
For the bu, for the budget?
Yes.
For the budget, everything is still on track for final submission by May 15th after Ms. Makis looks at it.
Well, that's what we're, you know, that's, that's obviously discussions we need to have with our, our state monitor as well. You know, I, I don't know what the process is as far as, you know, she, she just literally came into district today.
Correct, yeah, yes, yes. I think there's a couple things. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I think what's missing, even though you say you're trying to be transparent, I think the transparency is still missing. I think there's things that this board has done, and this is throughout the past now couple of years, once Mr. DePisa was put into office. I think the lack of knowledge between the business office, the administration, and the board has been too far. And I said this at the last meeting. Somebody's in charge of all of the money without any checks and balances in place. But I also think it's important that the community understands that, Mr. Bania, you were not the one who hired Mr. DePisa. That was the previous administration. He came in in June of 2020 when Ms. Julie, Dr. Glazer was still the superintendent. Out of the nine people on this board, four of you were on the board at that time, not all nine of you. That in June of '22, he was, sorry, October of '22, he was promoted to Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Bania, when you took over full-time. I think what's missing is all of the information on the person who made the problem. And I think that transparency is what has been lacking. I think the transparency of looking at the audit that some people are looking at and saying, "Listen, the auditor that has been doing this, if you look back at all the audits in place, have been doing this until at, at least 20, 2000, the year 2000." That, that auditor does municipalities all across the state, not just Nutley. You can point out all these little things that's missing to clear what is happening between you, the board, you, the administration, and you, a crook. Because that's what he is. He is a crook.[1141.16][1141.16](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Frey?
Yes.
And I understand that, but obviously it's, it is a personnel matter.
I get it, I get it.
Obviously, we cannot comment on that, so.
I get it, and I'm not asking for comment. The fact that the, the system is being called garbage, it is not garbage if it is the system that has been put in place for years. That is an issue that has not been checked. That is an issue that has not been updated. These systems, if you are a business, are being looked at every single year and updated. So the fact that the audit came out, and it did come out for '22, '23, and it had a boatload of issues in it, that is the first one that has come out with issues. And yes, that audit came out with those issues to say, "You have a problem." And then, when you figured out you had the problem, after that February 7th audit, that's when you went back and went, "What are we going to do?" Now, yes, you were fixing those problems in the fall as well, but when you're not forecasting out a year, that is a problem. My bank account, I don't look at it and go, "Oh, I got never-ending money. That's all good." That's not the way it works. You need to forecast out a year. You need to look at this monthly, not yearly. Because when you look at something yearly, these things are going to slip through. That is a problem. Switching to Ms. Makis, and I'm sorry that you come in in these situations, tough time. The state monitor, how long is this position going to be around for? And?
Ten years.
Ten years maximum or ten years?
Ten years maximum, I hope.
Okay. What about, what's the minimum?
Ten years.
So that's it, flat?
Ten years.
All right. And who is paying for the position? Is that a budgeted, a line item in the budget? Yes, okay. For the monitor to look, how far back are we looking? Are we only looking at last year or are we looking at from the higher?
So, yeah, so we're going to be meeting with the, like I said, Mrs. Makis just literally was in district today.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to be, she has a lot of work, a lot of people to, to meet with, and that's what we're going to be doing in the coming days and we'll, we'll have more of an answer for you.
Okay. And the forensic audit, is that also going to go back to day one of?
We will, as soon as we know exactly, you know, exactly what the details are, we will let everyone know.
Yep. I know the budget changes are not set in stone. I know you still have to look at the budget. How much power does the board have and the administration have once it gets turned over to Ms. Makis?
The final say is with our state monitor.
Okay.[1315.25][1315.25](LAUGHING). You don't have to answer it, I got it. Mr. Bania, you said last night that you're going to look at, and you, you've been saying this, these are your words, ineffective use of staff, meaning jobs that are redundant. That's my interpretation, so correct me if I'm wrong. Jobs that are redundant or jobs that kind of cross over. Is that information that the monitor is going to get in this decision-making process?
Yes, the monitor gets all information, all, all budgetary, how we constructed this. She vets everything. And it was, the inefficiencies were not, were not also due to how people were scheduled, those types of things, you know, throughout the district.
Okay. On staffing itself, I know there's been already some separation from non-tenured staff who have not been renewed. Out of curiosity, is there a reason why we did it that way and not for budgetary purposes? And if you can't answer that?
I, I generally can't speak to personnel decisions, but I can tell you that every year we go through the process of reviewing our, our staff, especially non-tenures. And we go through the process of holistically scoring and looking at them, looking at their strengths, and also recommending goals for the next year for, for our staff. This process is consistent in many districts. And once those, once those, that's identified, actually, we work with the EAN to have those conversations and they would prefer to have those sooner than later. And that's part of the reason we had that.
So you kind of answered the question. Is, is there a reason why it, it wasn't a staff reduction as far, because now you potentially have to fill those roles? Is that why you did it that way?
Potentially, because every year, it's a very similar process, we go through and find the best people for our students based on what we're looking at. And that, that's a, that's something we do.
Just out of curiosity, statistic-wise, looking back at meeting minutes since 2018, only 13 teachers or powers have been terminated, not renewed, which is an average of two per year. This year so far, Spring Garden has lost four. Lincoln School has lost one. And I know the high school has lost some. I don't have that number. Is there a reason why there's more this year than previous years?
I would say that numbers typically higher than two. People get non-renewed by just not making on the next or they, they typically may resign or things of that nature. I don't, I'd have to check, verify those numbers.
Okay.
I, I would say that the number this year is, is within the range of our typical conversations.
Okay. The state, the state average, and I'm going back to a 2017 report, is 2.7 per year. That is the state average. So again, I'm just asking, why does this number seem higher than usual? Is that something that's because of the budgetary issues or is that something that these teachers were just not performing up to par?
The latter, yeah. We, we reviewed and went through that process.
Was there any, was there any thought process in the timing of these non-renewals? And the reason I ask is because this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. It's also Mental Health Awareness Month. Does, does it just seem like a lack of, of thought in the timing of it?
Our, our timing right now is dictated by our budget preparation as well as working through to solve these problems and our state monitor has to review these things. So these cuts are, are not something we're looking forward to and we want to make sure they're verified.
I'm sure.
and we want to make sure they're verified with accurate budget numbers by our state monitor. So we still have to go through that process.
The pre-K program, it has been approved for '24, '25. Has it been approved past that? Has the, because I know in November is when that budget gets approved. Have we been approved?
So the budget doesn't get approved in November. In November, you get to talk to the state about how many seats you'll have, how many classes you have. You apply to the state based on what you can accommodate. That's your time to increase classes. I believe it gets approved in December, I want to say. And then that budget becomes due sometime in the middle of the winter. And then that budget has to be approved. So the process is really in November, I think it's November 15th, I want to say off the top of my head. You have to project out your next September years.
Okay.
And that's how funding happens there.
Are you still looking to expand the program continually throughout?
Yes, we are.
Okay. With the budget presentation that you presented, with the deficit of this year, the potential $7 million, is there an estimated amount of us getting more money so that July 1st, we don't open the year and go, "Uh-oh, we don't have money"?
That number is not up to the district. It's by looking, Ms. Makis will be looking through and talking to, I believe, the DOE and the Treasury Department for that.
So that could be a fluid amount of money?
I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer to that question.
No, sure.
Right now, I mean, we met with the auditor today
Okay.
to ensure that we have captured all of the purchase orders that we've captured. We know very clearly what the revenues are going to be. That's what we were working on today. And because I have to verify to the state the exact amount of money that they should be loaning to the district. So that number that you're quoting is, may not be the number that you finally read about in the newspaper.
Okay.
Because that's part of the process is for me to, to review that and not to ask for more than we need, but also not to ask for less than we need.
Okay.
So that when we end up June 30th, we're starting clean on July 1st.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that's, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. How has the budget review process changed previous to other years? I know, and I respect all of your, your hard work that has gone into creating this current budget. Is it different than past years?
Well, I mean, I'll let Mr. Bania answer that, but, but, you know, this year, obviously, the budget has been led by our superintendent. So he's the one that has had direct input into the budget.
For our, the financial side, we've been using Ray Serenelli and his group to verify third-party, all of our staffing, system control roster has been a lot of the time as well as he is direct reporting to the Board of Education as to the status of the adequacy of our budget based on the projections. He provides us feedback as to comparables versus other towns, similar size, similar stature, and what we're looking at. We share with him the needs of the district and he's been working with us to make sure the preliminary budget is adequate as per that, and he is direct reporting to the board.
Just?
I just want to add to that.
Yep.
Mr. Serenelli has also assisted Mr. Bania with the, you know, what they call the roster control, right? And that is, that is a system that identifies every single personnel within the school district and actually connects it to an individual department. So that, that has been a complete restructuring of that. So that, so that everything is accurate moving forward.
So that's part of the strategic changes that you had talked about? Is, is number one, having more eyes on the budget? And then having this based on approval flow, background checks, Board of Ed, the, and just efficiencies across the board? All of, all of the budget creations have been based on the corrective action plan in place, is that correct? The processes behind it?
Some of the controls and in the corrective action plan are being implemented as we speak. The corrective action plan most likely will be modified as we learn more and as we look at other parts of the budget to find savings. The corrective action plan, I believe, is a living document that will be modified in order to meet the needs of the district.
Are any of these efficiencies, I know Commissioners and Board of Ed, two separate entities, but the One Nutley Group Plan has been created. Have any of these efficiencies been crossovers between, say, Nutley, Parks and Rec people and our athletic department where they can split time between both? Has there been any, any intertwining between us paying somebody 20 hours in the Board of Ed and 20 hours paid by the town?
It's definitely something we're looking at. We, our shared service agreement mostly works with facility usage and different things. We are looking to expand that to all possible ways to do this. What you're bringing up is a great point and we are looking to capitalize on those improvements.
And just, just again, just, and, you know, Mrs. Makis is here and obviously we appreciate her being here. So thank you for that. But, you know, she is, like I said, this is her first day in district.
Correct.
You know, even though this, this budget was, was put together, you know, she still needs to spend some time, you know, looking through the budget. So that's, that's very important and I think that's, you know, something that everyone needs to understand.
Right. Listen, I've been through this. I've hired people, I've fired people. I've, it's not an easy process. I get it. I've been fired myself. It's a part of life. I get it. But when you have teachers here who feel, this is what I've always said in business, like walking dollar signs, because that's what they are at this point. When you are looking at a budget, that is how you have to kind of look at it, is how much does this person make? And then you assess. And that's a problem. That's a problem because they no longer feel like a human. They no longer feel like they, they have the back of the people in charge. And that's what needs to be clear. Now more than ever, there's teachers here, there's parents here, there's more than 300 people watching. They're going to be continue watching. Everybody has eyes on this because it affects our kids and it affects the students in more ways than any of us will foresee from here on out for at least 10 years with Mrs. Makis here. It's, it, I think it's good that we have these meetings, but there are also times where the, you need to be clear and answer questions that you can answer. And I know it's hard to do, but there's some times where you have to give that tough answer that you can legally give. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments?
Jack Satter, I'm not a resident, but I have been a bus driver for five years with you guys. I just have a couple of recommendations. First, I'd like to know, is this, ma'am, are you the monitor? Please don't go. You, you put things in, you say things that we understand. You're not talking up here. And a lot of us don't have budgetary knowledge or whatever. But there's two recommendations I'd like to make. You, you had mentioned that you're not involved, the board is not involved with the day-to-day running of the schools. And I would strongly recommend that you all get down and come out and take a look and get a feel for what goes on before you make any decisions on budgets and find out exactly what, what is going on in the, in the schools. And the second thing, I retired from a Fortune 500 company that was, when I left, we were working on getting the Congressional Malcolm Baldrige Award, which is a quality award. And one of the things that we, that the company did was we took the pyramid and we turned it upside down so that the people on top were supporting everyone underneath them. Instead of, you know, looking down and saying, "Okay, you guys do this for us." It was you guys doing for the majority of people that kept the company running. So I would strongly recommend that maybe you take a look at that too. And that's about all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments?
Has any member of the board ever rode on a school bus? And see what it's like to deal with these kids every day? We all, we only carry special needs kids and these kids are great. And I want to keep them great.
Yeah.
And we can't do that if people don't understand what we do every day.
But we, and, and, and just, just to be clear, this board understands, but there are, there's difficult decisions that have to be made. And, and, and so we, we understand and we appreciate everybody. We appreciate what you do. We appreciate what the pares do, the teachers, all the way up to administrator, the entire district. We appreciate everyone. It's, we're just in a challenging time and, and we have, you know, unfortunately, we have to make difficult decisions. And we do that, we make those decisions based on the information we have. Of course, first and foremost is, is the students. Okay? That's the most important thing. Every decision is, that takes that into account, is our students. And then, of course, our staff. But again, as, as, as we've explained, a lot of these costs continue to increase. Salaries continue to increase. Okay? Every year, there's, there's adjustments for, for, for the raises that are in the contracts, right? There's healthcare, there's, there's, you know, all different types of benefits, pensions. You know, everything goes up, gasoline, all of that, all of that stuff, right? And, and we are limited on the revenue side as to how much we are permitted to increase that. And, and even though sometimes you're allowed to go a little above the 2%, those costs that are on the expense side are increasing at sometimes 8% to 10% a year. And it's very challenging when, you know, if you take just one, one particular area that goes up by 10 or 15%. That, that alone would, would put you in the red. So, so there are, it's, it's very challenging and, and, and I just, everybody needs to understand. Everybody up here, every board member understands. Everybody appreciates everything that you do, everything that our teachers, our staff. We appreciate everything. And it's difficult. It's not easy to be up here.
I understand that. It's a very tough job.
And look, and, and the criticism, and I've said it before, we understand the criticism and to some degree, we accept the criticism. But we are, we also do understand, you know, that, what you're going through. It's just, it's a difficult time. There's difficult decisions that have to be made. Hopefully, those decisions, you know, won't affect as many people. But again, those are the challenges with the budget. It's not, it's not a simple issue with where we're able to just continue to go and, and, and take last year's program and run it this year because it's just, those costs are increasing, increasing at a rate of 8% to 10% plus a year.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your candor and thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone, does anyone else have any questions?
Good evening. Tim Nelligar, 14 Cadmus Street. Ms. Makis, welcome. I'm not going to address specific budget things because I know you're just getting here. So there are some things, but there are some adjacent things that I'd like to, to just comment on. First of all, I hope that as we've got, as some people have gotten notices of poor performance, that we're going to continue, and I know you can't comment on personnel, but to look at the poor performance of other people who may be resigning on the agenda today, who have been in a position in the district, and that we will be going to the state after their license. I also hope as we move forward, we look at our hiring practices and not just our budgeting as a simple Google search may have stopped us from being in this predicament to begin with. I would like to, to ask one question. Do we have a retention plan in place? I know several of our teachers have talked about being concerned about their positions, paraprofessionals. What are we doing to make sure we retain the great teachers that we have? As we know, there are school districts all over the state clamoring for teachers and I'm afraid they're going to come in and raid the great teachers that we have. So do we have a retention plan in place so that we keep the great educators we have so my kids still get a great education they've been getting?
Yeah, I mean, thank you for that. It's definitely a concern. We have great educators in here and I, I know not knowing is sometimes the worst thing, right? We're moving forward as quickly as we can to put together a reappointment agenda to move forward. And we are also working to find efficiencies to make sure we retain all our great teachers. So retention plan in the term of our expeditious work, I know it may not seem like that. I'm saying that right now, but we are trying to move with all the parameters we're dealing with right now. Unfortunately, right now, it's going to take a little bit longer because we have to review things still as to where our budget is. And I'm hoping through work, through time, we find, you know, where we need to be with all of our great teachers.
Thank you. Just one more quick thing?
And paraprofessionals as well. I want to make sure I had that in there.
Absolutely. And just one more thing, just because it was mentioned in the budget presentation that there's now third-party eyes on the budget. Really, we've always had those third-party eyes in the Finance Committee and the Board of Ed itself as elected officials for the town. I didn't do my due diligence in paying enough attention in the past to it. But we have, those are the third-party eyes. Now we have fourth-party eyes in the state monitor and that gives me hope for the future moving forward. But I know for the long term, we, we do have some impact that'll be coming for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Barbara Lovejoy, Hampton Place. I just have a couple of quick questions about the position of the Business Administrator. Are we actively seeking now a new Business Administrator? We're in the search now for a Business Administrator?
Hello? Yes, we will be, over the remainder of this week, putting out a posting and actively looking for a Business Administrator.
So the position here that says Acting Business Administrator will only be in place until we hire a new person?
Yes, the Business Office needs authority to do certain tasks by certificate and our Assistant Business Administrator will be put in place pending the completion of a search for a new Business Administrator.
And my last question is, the box next to it is blank. So can you tell me how much we're paying the Acting Business Administrator?
Right now, the salary is consistent with her current salary.
Okay, that's, you're, you're not able to tell us what the actual?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. It is a person, it's probably on a board agenda somewhere. I don't know off the top of my head what our Assistant Business Administrator makes. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish you name to speak?
How you doing? My name's Dave Lynnholm, 10 Donna Court. I guess this is my first meeting coming to this, but I guess some of my questions are, why is it that when money is lost or a budget is in a deficit, the first thing everybody wants to do is cut salaries? They always blame salaries, benefits. That's always the first answer. Is there no money that can be saved anywhere else? Because the teachers that are here, the paraprofessionals, everyone else, that's probably going to get cut or whatever. Those people chose to deal with children. They chose to educate them. I mean, that, that was their career choice. And I mean, I don't see any empty seats up there. Like, where are your resignations? I know it doesn't save money, but why is it, why is it their responsibility when it had nothing to do with the issue? That's my question.
That's, you know, that's a, that's a challenging question, right? You know, we're volunteers and we get, we get elected. And, and so, you know, obviously, the decisions we make, if, if the public does, doesn't like those decisions, they obviously cannot vote for us if we decide to run again.
Right, but you're, you're in the seats right now. And I'm coming to you right now as someone who votes, who chose this town for the educational system, right? I have three kids in the school system right now and one more on the way eventually. I mean, in the, they went anywhere from the preschool program into, or in Lincoln School. I think the teachers there are absolutely fantastic. I had one, one of my daughters, she wouldn't open up to anybody, even around her own family. She was there for a couple of months and I'm telling you, she's around her family all the time. If you put her in a room outside me and her mother, she started crying. These teachers, within a couple of months, had her opened up. I mean, she talks to, it's just amazing what they were able to do. And the idea that those people had nothing to do with it, the very first thing is always, "Let's cut salary, let's cut benefits, they make too much." I think that's BS because, listen, salaries go up all the time.
They, they do.
And if that's not budgeted for, then, then there's, there's another issue.
Yeah, and there's, there's no question that we have excellent staff, right?
Yeah.
There, there's no question there. And we're looking for efficiencies in all, all, all different areas. And that's, you know, something that, which is why our state monitor is here. Our state monitor is, like I said, she's going to be, you know, assisting on this, looking at those different areas. But again, we're looking at all areas from top to bottom. And, you know, if we can find deficiencies, you know, those are things that we're going to do. We're going to implement. But it is, it's challenging. It's challenging because, you know, unfortunately, salaries, salaries and benefits and, you know, pensions and all of that make up 80% to 85% of, of the budget.
Right, but what you get, everyone says salaries like they're a negative thing. What you get with a salary is you get a service. You get something that's provided, that is tangible. You look at people and say, "Okay, they make a salary, they get benefits," but their kids are getting something for that. It's very easy to say, "Oh, that's the biggest part." It should be the biggest part. 100% should be salaries. Because these are the people who are doing the work.
I understand, but the reason why I bring that up is not to, is not to point out that that's the easiest place to go. But just to point out that those are the challenges. There's challenges with that, that when your, your, your budget is made up of 80% to 85% salaries and benefits and healthcare. It's challenging because some of those things are difficult to, to be able to adjust, right? Because of, you know, union contracts and all of that. So those are, it's, it's not a point to say that that's the largest area and that's where we're going to look. It's the fact that that is the challenges of being, you know, 80% to 85% of the budget.
And forgive me for not knowing this, but, so the money that was gone, $7 million, is that about right? That's what I've heard? Is that close?
That's the area, yes.
Okay. What's the total budget that that's out of?
The total budget for last year?
So you said out of the seven, you're missing $7 million or you overspent $7 million?
So just to be clear, the money's, the money's, you know, based on our, our investigation, the money's not missing.
Okay.
Okay? The money, the money is, there was issues in the, in the budget. On the revenue side, overstated revenues, and on the budget side, understated.
What's the total budget?
The total budget for last year, Mr. Bania, what was it, 80?
82 million.
82 million.
82 million. All right. So you're missing what, 9%?
But again, it's not, not missing, right? The money, the money is, the money is?
You're in the red. Is that good enough to say you're in the red?
Yeah, but when you have, when you have overstated revenues and then you have expenditures that were understated, right? You're, you're still doing those services, right? You're still, you still have those, those programs. You still have those, those payments that you're making. You just don't have the money for it.
Right. It's a little hard for me to understand. If I didn't have money in my account, they'd take my house away, they'd take everything. So I'm not fully understanding that, but I don't have to. I just want to impress upon you, and by the way, your answers were fantastic. I think you were great up there, but very entertaining, very, very good. Really appreciate it. But just, listen, people have said it before, I know my time's up, but I can tell you right now, just going with what I find and what most poli, not whatever. People who are elected tend to go with salaries, benefits, and I just think there are other ways to save that money. Bad decisions are going to have to be made. I can understand that. But I don't think it should solely come from that. Because I mean, the teachers here, really, it's the reason that we chose to live here and to raise our children here and have them go to the schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Basely, Barren Drive. First, I want to thank everyone who came up and spoke tonight in the last few weeks. It takes a lot of courage and I continue to, all continue to come up here and speak your mind. With that said, I want to say, this is a disgrace that we are here in this position tonight, facing these challenges. Nutley historically has gotten surplus money and grants to support our special needs program and we should be leading the way. In fact, now we're, we're chasing our tail here. And I, and I hold all of you, most of you up on that stage, responsible. And you mentioned next election time. I assure you, next election, I will hold you accountable for that. The budget issues, misappropriation of funds, invoices and filing cabinet draws, that, that's incomprehensible, some of the things that we've been hearing from you guys over the last few weeks. You know, we moved to Nutley 22 years ago because we heard great things about Nutley. It came from Lynn Hurst. We stayed in Nutley because we saw great things. I'm a Raider. I'm a Raider. I'm a Raider. We stayed in Nutley because we saw great things. But now, I, I, I'm not sure what the future holds for Nutley and the Nutley Public School Systems. I currently don't even have a child in the Nutley Public School Systems. He graduated last June. As a matter of fact, today, he finished his freshman year at Montclair. As a matter of fact, today, he finished his freshman year at Montclair State University. Go Redhawks. He was, however, on the special needs program and went through the program here as he was diagnosed at two and a half with autism. He started at Radcliffe at the age of three, went over to Lincoln, middle school, and then finished at the high school. 16 years of IEPs we sat with. Many people in the room, some challenging, but you know what? He was a success story. He came out of a great special needs program in the township of Nutley. As again, that's why we stayed here, because that's what Nutley was known for. Ms. Mara, Ms. Howard, Ms. Renee, Ms. Marchesi, Ms. Delita, Sarah Fredericks, Mr. S., Ms. Ccone, Ms. Wick, Mr. Conti, hell, even Mr. Anderson, are just some of the names of the people that had an effect on my son every day as he came to school. You could ask Mr. Anderson, he was the first one at the door before anyone else. These are just some of the teachers, paras, case managers, and therapists that guided my son on his journey to where he is today. So I say, thank you. For those who are still here in the room, a lot of them left. Consistency is crucial for all children. A lot of the parents have said that here tonight. It's a must-have for someone with special needs. Many of you have said in the last few weeks, you have family members, daughters, grandchildren on the spectrum, so you have empathy. And I'm with you with that, and I share that empathy. But make no mistake, we're here because of the lack of oversight and the lack of overspending. That wasn't because there's a few more percentages of people on special needs program that was in oversight in the budget. I'm seeing we've overspent 300% on some of these programs over the last year. Weight rooms and football fields and name, going down the list. So it's more than just there's an increase in special needs students in here, so please don't make that the issue while we're $7 million over budget, okay? With that said, I hope that the rest of the parents here and those that are online that have 16 more years of IEPs to sit through, that they have the same experience that we had, which was a great one. But what I'm seeing over the last few weeks, I don't think that's the case, but I hope over the next 10 years during your tenure, that you help right the ship here and get us back on track, because I still want to be a Nutley Raider, even though I have no more children in the school system. I do have family and friends in the school system. So I ask you all to consider what the rest of the parents are saying here tonight and over the last few weeks, and ensure that it remains a great program for years to come, and you don't outsource our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, I'm sorry.
Listening to... Tracy Smariello, 27, Nutley Ave. Coming up behind the gentleman who just spoke wonderfully about in district. My son, David, is out of district. And I understand how expensive it is to send a child out of district. He's 18. He's been 18 years of IEPs, IFSPs. I can't even name all the amazing therapists, counselors, case managers. Our child study team has been amazing, absolutely amazing. I pride myself telling, I teach in Carney, and I go there every day and speak of the amazing, amazing child study teams that I have dealt with in Nutley. Like I said, I know how expensive it is. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Banyan, because I did send an email and you promptly responded to me. And I do want you to consider all children, in district, out of district, that we really, really follow that IEP, that individualized part of their education plan, to know that they all deserve amazing things. And I'm speaking on both ends because I have a seventh grader who's typical. I have a freshman who has an IEP because she has a hearing aid. So I run the gamut of all of it, and I just really, really appreciate everything that you do, everything our teachers do, our case managers, and to please, please consider the children who need things. I don't want to say the most, because every child does, but transportation, our paraprofessionals, the aides on the bus. Rich was my son's bus driver for a couple of years. Everybody in Nutley, every single bus driver and aide that I have encountered has been nothing short of amazing. And to take that away from our children would be a complete detriment. So thank you for your time.
Mrs. Makers?
First of all, I just want to say, I love education. I truly love it. I could never be a teacher, but I love education, and so I went into the business side of it. When budgets are put together, it is important to understand that budgets are not numbers. That's what we're talking about today, because we're in a situation where numbers are important. But when a budget is prepared, a budget is not numbers. Every number reflects a child. Every number reflects education. And when a budget is prepared, hopefully with my help, that's what you have to look at. You don't look at it as numbers. It's how much can we squeeze out for the children, in this case, of Nutley? And that's what we are going to do. I know that the picture, that my job is, there's no question, my job is to ensure that Nutley doesn't overspend its budget again. There's no question about it. And decisions are going to have to be made, and not everybody's going to be happy with every decision. But know that when we analyze the budget, I am not looking at numbers. And I can tell you, I've been here, I started yesterday, I spent the day here with your superintendent. I have never seen anybody work so hard as he did today. He was at every meeting with me, every question was answered. The people in your business office, I have to say, are wonderful people. And I say to you that his approach, and I don't know the board as well, but I believe their approach too, the approach is looking at it in terms of children. And that's what we're going to do. It doesn't mean everybody's going to be happy with this. Some of you are going to call me names that I probably have been called before, but understand that we are not looking at numbers. We are looking at children. That's what the budget is. It's children. And we are going to work our hardest to achieve the most that we have with the dollars that are available, so that you are not sitting here next year asking what happened. We need a baseline, and that's what we're looking for 24, 25, to be the new baseline. We have to straighten the ship. Once we do that, what you are going to see, I hope, is that Nutley achieves and is where it was three years ago. It's going to take us a while. I tell people that we have to take baby steps, that we're not going to be taking giant steps. We're taking baby steps as long as we're moving forward. And that's what we're going to do. But understand that my philosophy is that a budget represents children, and we will do our best to ensure that that is the focus at all times with all of the tough decisions that this board is going to have to make. I appreciate the opportunity, sir.
I thank you for that, those comments. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Cheryl Gonzalez, 423 Center Street. Good evening, Mr. Banyan, the board. I am a parent. I have two children, one who's out of the district already, as the other gentleman spoke. Just finished her freshman year today at Montclair State University, studying music therapy. We've come from the elite music program that Mr. V started us on. Both of my children have IEPs. I can't tell you the consistency, the importance it is to stay consistent within the district for our children, especially children who have related services. My son is currently finishing at Radcliffe with the amazing Mr. Carney, who, you know, I always joke around with him that he will be coming with us to middle school and high school, because, I mean, he can attest to the many, many changes that Maximus has had, where he started with Mrs. LaGuardia at Spring Garden School when he was three years old. Literally, two days after he turned three years old, he's been in the school system. My thing, my biggest thing here is that our students would be nothing without the amazing paras that we've had in this school district. I just thank you. Thank you to every single para, starting from JP Garcia, who's no longer here, to Ms. Laura Volpe, to Ms. Gina Casal, to all the amazing paras that have, you know, done the amazing things that they've done for our son and for my daughter as well. But there have been many changes. Maximus has experienced many changes over nine years. Paras just being switched out, put elsewhere, behaviorists, you know, just counselors. There's no consistency. Now that it's worked out for my son with the consistency that we've had, what would you say, Mr. Carney? Two years that we've had the same child study team staff with the counseling and the behaviorist? Almost two years that we've had no changes? Roughly about so? Behaviorist is a little new, but, you know, behaviorist is pretty good because she's following the format. But we have to understand that when we keep making these changes and you have a plan that's in effect for your child, not every single behaviorist knows how to carry out the nuances of it. Not every single aide, it's not even paras, they're not informed as much about the plans that are in place for your child. We have wonderful teachers that work with them. We have Mrs. Ryan, who worked with Max for two years. And we do have excellent teachers, but we also do need more support for the paras. The paras have a very strong voice in our children's lives, and they're not acknowledged enough. So my request to you is to stay as transparent as possible. Please try not to make as many changes that the board sees fit. You know, administration, like, they're nothing without the support system. Like, they need consistency as well. They need to feel supported. So I'd just like to thank you all, because we have stayed at Nutley because of the program, but there have been instances where I've been seriously considering maybe going out of district because of the changes. But if we can try to stay consistent for our children who have these needs, that changes are very hard for them within itself, it would be a better program. And I'm also speaking for the students that are out of district as well. I have a wonderful, my daughter's best friend, her sister, her little sister's in a wonderful program at Alpine. I would hope that these changes would not be effective for them as well, because, again, we come to this town because we've heard nothing but wonderful things for the special education community. So I would really hope that those changes that you guys are looking at is not going to affect the little ones. And I would hope that the teachers that are here now, who are not working with the special needs community, are not affected with over bombardment of overpopulations of students in their classrooms as well. And I'd also like to thank the amazing music department that we have here as well, because if it wasn't for this department, my daughter would...
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to come up and comment? Okay, seeing none, could I have a motion to close the public hearing part? Mr. Pataglia, would you move finance resolutions?
Mr. President, please, I'd like to move finance, resolution one is written.
Discussion?
Mr. President, if I may? Just like some clarification about the timeline with this budget. We have to vote on this budget by tonight?
Yeah, so I think that's kind of the challenge. We have to vote on this budget tonight. I'm actually a little bit torn on voting on this budget without, Mrs. Makers, you having the opportunity to review the budget thoroughly. Obviously, you've been in district just today, so that's a challenge for me. I'm sure it's a challenge for most of the board.
You can have some, I'm sorry. You can have somebody move to table the budget to a, budget approval to a specific date and recess this meeting. And at that time, we will come back, and hopefully, you'll be in a position to reconsider. But it has to be a date certain.
Okay. Because that would make, obviously, like, I think that would make this board feel better that you've had the opportunity to review the budget and have, obviously, input on the budget, although you do have overall input on the budget. But I then, I would like to make a motion then to recess this meeting.
You have to make, you have, you have three issues on the agenda.
Okay.
You need to table one of them.
Okay.
Vote on the other two tonight, and then, table it to a date certain, which I would ask that it be next week.
Next week, okay. Okay, so...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I will make the motion to table the finance resolution number one and move that agenda to, I believe it's May the 13th, which is next Monday night.
Hold on, Mr. Kozinski. I believe you have to table resolutions one through four.
No, she just said only one.
The only, the only, the only motion you're going to table are anything that's related to the budget.
So that would be one, finance resolutions one through four?
Okay.
Yes.
The personnel ones.
No, just finance resolutions one through four.
Yes, all of those have to be tabled.
Then I amend my, I would make the motion that we table finance resolutions one through four until Monday, May the 13th.
Mr. Kozinski, I'd, I'd like to give Ms. Makers some more time. I'd like to table it to Thursday, May 16th, if that's, if that's better for your schedule?
That would give, that would have to mean that I wouldn't have to necessarily work all weekend.
Okay.
Kidding. Just kidding. Whatever is convenient for the board, just understand, and the attorney will tell you better than I, I believe that certain notifications have to be done by May 15.
Yeah, it's to be submitted by the 15th Thursday. Well, notification serves as personnel.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the non-renewals and things like that.
Yes. I guess, so that, that, that has to be, I know the date was asked on whether it has to be May, will be by May 15.
Yes.
Those decisions will have to be reviewed, and superintendent will have to make notifications by May 15.
Okay. I just want to be fair to you, to give you as much time as you need. So that's why I...
So that's why I, Mr. Kozinski, I put forward this May 16th, Thursday, May 16th at 6:30?
I think...
But that's...
I don't, I don't know that that's allowable. I understand we have to have the budget submitted by the 15th.
Well...
Yes, and there is a process, and we are taking advantage of the process.
Okay, I'll yield.
I'll defer to the attorney, but...
No, I'll defer to Ms. Makers on that one. Then I will yield to our monitor, okay? Then I will, again, amend my motion that we table finance resolutions one through four until Thursday, May 16th.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Balsamo?
So this is roll call on tabling, this is roll call on the motion?
Tabling one to four.
Yes.
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Dr. DeLeah?
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels? Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Farro?
Yes.
And just make sure the resolution for Ms. Makers has the date certain in the resolution of the 16th at 6:30.
And the resolution should, the resolution should include, for purposes of the state monitor, to do a review.
Okay, so now we have finance, Mr. Pataglia? Okay, so then we need to, if there's any discussion on items five and six, if there's no discussion, then roll call?
Mr. Balsamo? Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Dr. DeLeah?
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels? Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Farro?
Yes. Mr. DeLeah, will you take personnel agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve personnel agenda items A and B as they are written.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Balsamo?
Yes.
Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Dr. DeLeah?
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty?
Yes.
Mr. Farro?
Yes. Is there any old business to come before the board? Any new business?
Mr. President, if I could, and I had a speech all prepared, but since we postponed our budget discussion, I'll save it for then, but I did want to thank Ms. Martin for her input. The feeling that you expressed certainly has always been my feeling, but I can't speak for the board, but I think most of us feel that way. It's a difficult time in Nutley. I've been on the board 27 years. I've never had to think or even contemplate voting no on a budget, but because of the circumstance we're in now, I'm glad we're going to postpone it till we get more clarity on the budget. But again, I thank you for your input. Sorry, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. Any, any new business to come before the board? Okay, then I make a motion to recess tonight's meeting to Thursday, May 16th at 6:30.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Balsamo? Mr. Pataglia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Dr. DeLeah? Mr. Fraginels? Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Scotty? Mr. Farro?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone.